All right. Thank you, thank you very much. Welcome to Town Meeting. You know, even though our program tonight is in part about kids, you should make up your own mind whether your children should watch, since we are going to be dealing with some sexually explicit issues. Even people with a lot of computer knowledge know about the Internet, but what they may not know is that while you can tap into, say, the Congressional Record, you can also find out how to get naked pictures of like Jackie and Assis or Princess Diana. It is a cyberspace world where pedophiles lure children into conversations in sexual chat rooms, a wild technological frontier that some say must be tamed or censored. State Representative Lois McMahon introduced the Harmful to Minors Bill in the legislature this year. Ultimately, that was vetoed by Governor Mike Lowery. The bill addressed materials accessed and provided on the Internet. Chris Nicaia co-hosts a computer show on KVI Radio Sundays from 10 till noon. He says, "No censorship. Let parents control what their children access." We will talk to them in a moment, but first, I want to go over here and talk to Rich Sherrill. Rich Sherrill is a Como employee who has an infinite amount of computer knowledge, and what we have done here is we've asked Rich to kind of like surf the Internet for us during the course of this program, during this hour. You know, so he sat down a little while ago and he just kind of like does whatever you do, because I don't know what he does. But, so what, in the short time here, what have you found so far? What are we looking at?
What we're looking at here, Ken, is the homepage for Playboy magazine on the World Wide Web.
Okay.
And from this point, we can jump off to several of any other linked locations so that we can look at articles from the recent copies of the magazine.
Okay.
Or in fact, we can go to the centerfold or other photographic work from the magazine.
Okay. Playboy, what about other magazines?
Playboy, Penthouse, Hustler, those are among the generally more palatable of the magazines, some of the material that we found.
Pictures of, I mentioned that you could tap into, I guess there's something where there's naked celebrities and public officials and where there's lists of where those pictures are accessible or something?
That's correct. Some of the links, go-to lists of photographs that are available for sale on compact discs, those aren't usually available across the Internet but are mailed out to users who would purchase those.
And you know, one of the things, the quality of the pictures is one of the things that like hits me. I mean, it's like, it is like, it's like looking at the magazine. I mean, it's not the blurry...
That's correct. The quality is very high-quality photographic images that it's possible to bring across the Internet now because of the phone speeds and also the processing speeds of the computer, the ability to display them.
Now, one of the other indexed things that I know, because we pulled something up earlier, and it talked about, you know, group sex, it talked about, you know, couples engaged in sexual activity, it talked about sadomasochistic activity, bestiality. Are those things all in there in chat rooms or otherwise?
They are all there in various forms. The quickest way generally is to run a search for a list of available topics. In this case, I have done that using the term lesbian as a topic.
How long did it take you to find this?
Takes about 15 seconds to run the search and bring the list up.
Oh. Could I do this?
Yes, you could.
Now, you know what I don't know about computers.
I...
Could I do this?
You could do this. I would guess it might take half an hour with the material to learn how to do this.
Because I don't know computers.
That's correct.
Yes. See how readily, he knows that I don't know computers. Well, and we'll get back to, during the course of the program here this evening, Rich is just kind of like, I guess you're calling it surfing the Internet, and he's going to see what we can find, how long it takes to find it, how tough it is to get a hold of, whether you need access codes or whatever. But Lois, is this, does this kind of personify what your concerns are?
It certainly does, yes. I believe that even though it is the primary responsibility of parents to decide what their children are exposed to, it's also right for them to expect government to use its police powers to assist them in keeping their children from this kind of stuff.
Well, government, government doing what then, Lois? What would you suggest?
Well, I think there should be regulations that deal with and make a criminal act. In every other field, it is a criminal act to, like, for instance, we don't allow children to walk into adult bookstores, okay, and for those people to sell them adult material. And I think it's just as true about this kind of material, it's the same material.
So you want to limit access in the way we limit access to...
Yes, we do want to limit access to kids.
Okay. Chris, do you have a problem with that?
Oh, yeah, oh, definitely. I don't disagree that there's a problem. I disagree with the action that she's suggesting as far as regulation. Surprise, coming from a Republican representative. But I prefer less government. I believe, I believe responsibility lies not only with, to a certain degree with providers, to a great degree with the recipient and the parents of the recipient if we're talking about minors. But there are ways, there are laws that are standing that address this, that address a lot of the acts. In Mr. Montgomery's case, I'm not sure exactly what law it is, but I'm sure there are laws that would address maybe solicitation, it's not solicitation of a minor, we talked about that.
Well, one of the things, I think one of the more frightening aspects of this is that, that parents, you know, you talk to your children about, "Don't talk to strangers." You talk to parents, you talk to your children about inappropriate conversations with adults, whether they be neighbors or relatives. You talk to children about inappropriate touching. And, and so if your child, I mean, if you can turn around and see your 12-year-old sitting at the computer at home, you're going to assume that child is safe. The question here is, are they as safe as we assume they are?
I don't think we should assume. I think we should involve ourselves in, more in the children's lives.
I want to go, I want to go to the young man who's been valiantly trying to trip me and ask, "Do you work the computer?"
Yeah.
"You have a computer at home."
Mm-hmm.
"How tough is it, be honest with me, how tough is it to get into this stuff?"
Pretty easy.
How easy?
Five, 10 minutes.
So, so you sit down at, you're on one of the Internet services or bulletin boards or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and how do you get into it? What do you do? Or do you?
I don't.
Okay, you don't.
I can.
Hypothetically.
I have.
Where's Mom and Dad?
Home, hopefully.
Okay. All right. So Mom and Dad, hypothetically here, what's your name?
Matthew.
Matthew here is talking in the hypothetical fashion. How would my Matthew get into it?
I would go call up the service, and then I would, there's news groups you can go to, or, I don't have Netscape like he has there, which is the, but I can call up written text, or I can, what else is there?
There are ways of encrypting files, so you can post them to bulletin boards, sort of on the Internet, and then anybody with the right software can get those, get those text messages down and turn them back into pictures.
So there's no problem here, is there? I mean, you said how long?
I don't know, five, 10 minutes, same here.
Well, I, what I'd like to say is, he made a remark about government and Republicans being for less government. Well, I am for less government. However, government has always been involved and is legitimately involved in preventing crime, and I think this is a crime. Because we, we, for instance, morality, we do regulate morality. I mean, some people say government shouldn't regulate morality, but we do it all the time. Murder is immoral. Stealing is immoral. And let me ask you something. If you steal the innocence of a child, how do you get it back? How do they get it back? How can you return it to them?
I'm computer illiterate, but I was thinking about purchasing one because my teenage kids want one. But I...
You want?
I don't know. Well, I can't, you can teach them morals and values, but if they have that, I just want to know how to censor it in my house, not in your house, but just in mine, if there's any way that you can block that out.
Well, let's first address...
Hold on, I know a lot of people here probably know how to do this.
All right, but I want to, first, what do you, do you agree with what Lois is talking about, that maybe instead of having you be responsible for it, have the government intervene and be responsible for it? Do you agree with that or not?
Well, I just feel what's right for my family.
All right.
I don't feel what's right for anybody else.
Gotcha. All right, when we come back, you know, we mentioned, all right, go ahead. We mentioned chat rooms, we mentioned chat rooms. When we come back, we'll explain exactly what a chat room is, and we'll talk with Bill Montgomery, the father of the young Maple Valley boy who created such a stir by running off to San Francisco to meet up with someone he encountered on the Internet in a chat room. Stay with us, we'll be right back. Welcome back to Town Meeting, and tonight we're delving into the issue of uses on the Internet. Let's acknowledge, there are a lot of good things on the Internet. This is not a blanket condemnation of the Internet. But there are aspects of what's contained on the Internet that contain explicit sexual material that readily accessible to young people. Now, I want to introduce Bill Montgomery. Bill Montgomery is the father of the young Maple teenage Valley boy who, did I say that right? Maple Valley teenage boy. Who disappeared, just was gone one day. And Bill and his wife were able to trace through and found that he had been in touch with someone on the computer in what's called a chat room, talked to some neighbors, found out that he had received some money and a bus ticket, but beyond that, they did not know where he went. Now, fortunately, things turned out okay, because your son wound up, he was down in San Francisco.
Yes.
What, was he, was he, would you use the word lured? Am I putting words in your mouth by saying that?
No, that's most certainly, I would say that with vigorous terms.
And how did this come about?
My, my son was on, regularly logs on America Online, and it could have been any of the local services. And my, my son, I limited his time, and I was aware of the parental controls, the problem with the parental controls in America Online, you either lock everything out or you lock nothing out. And I see a problem with that, because, you know, at first, my son said, "I enjoy this particular chat room." It was a generic chat room, and, and I was...
Now, when we say, because I want to make sure that people are with us as we go along, chat rooms are divided into whatever you can imagine them to be. There are sexual chat rooms, and then there are subcategories beyond there. There are sadomasochistic chat rooms, there are bondage chat rooms, there's group sex chat rooms, there's gay lesbian chat rooms, and you go in there and you begin communicating with people.
Ken, forgive me, but there are Star Trek fan clubs.
Quite well taken, but Chris, it wasn't a Star Trek fan club that lured his son down to San Francisco.
Oh, I agree.
Okay, all right, that's, so I'm explaining in context of what we're talking about here.
Right.
I know, it's just, I have a problem with the imagery, starting from the most graphic...
Chris, you may have a problem with it.
And staying with the most graphic.
Chris, we're not here, we're not here because people object to Star Trek chat rooms. We're here because people object to the access that kids have to these kinds of rooms. And I acknowledged off the top that there are a lot of good things on the Internet. I'm not trying to blanketly condemn the Internet.
Okay.
If I could just respond to what he just said, I'm, you know, I think there's a big difference between freedom of speech and exploitation, and my son was exploited.
What, ultimately, you found out he was in one of these sexual chat rooms, had been sent some money, went down to San Francisco. Looking back, what would you have done differently? Would you have not gotten America Online? Would you have limited his time? Would you have, you know, what would you have done?
I don't fault America Online. I ultimately fault myself for not knowing that these, that these areas were there. I've since put the safeguards on, parental control, he cannot get into any of the chat rooms. Matter of fact, he can't, he cannot even get on America Online without getting my permission now.
Do you agree with what the representative is talking about doing, and having some level of government intervention?
Most certainly. As a matter of fact, I, I think that America Online and some of these groups don't go far enough. I think that there needs to be a minimum age of 18, just like it is in these adult bookhouses. And I think, I think, I think that the proof, that there needs to be proof of age 18, we need to keep our kids protected.
All right, who said no? You said no, what?
Why? Because kids are not as dumb as you think they are. They...
It doesn't, it doesn't take that much to get on to that stuff, and I mean, if, I think if I was his son, I would have more respect for my parents than to just go off to San Francisco. I have more for my life than just go somewhere with somebody I just talk to. I'd rather be home with my family.
Children definitely have more intelligence than a lot of parents think. We have to realize that any regulation that we give to the kids, the kids are going to find a way around it. That's all there is to it. They're smart! We have to take responsibility as parents and watch what they're doing, keep an eye on them. Yes, there are predators out there, but we have to make sure that these kids are intelligent enough to realize that there are predators out there and we need to watch out for them. We need to be involved as parents.
Lois, if what I'm hearing here is correct, it is, you know, there's a, there's a good deal of concern directed at what's going on in portions of the Internet, but there's a great hesitancy as well to see the government involve itself at this level.
Well, the government has always been involved in preventing crime, and these are crimes that we're talking about. What happened to that man's son was, is a crime, and whether or not it's going to be able to be prosecuted, it still should be.
Well, it hasn't been determined if a crime was committed.
Yes. Well, just because kids are smart, in fact, because kids are so smart, and I agree that kids are smart, that's exactly the reason we need to have protections out there, and the government needs to be involved in protecting them. And it's right for us to expect as parents to protect them.
At the same premise, I think if children are that smart, they should be able to discuss things, or parents should be able to discuss these things with their children and instill a set of values and understanding of the predators and the problems that are out there, and how the...
I agree totally with what Chris is saying. The problem is always, everybody always wants to look at the providers, they're not looking at themselves and trying to regulate the kids. What we need to do is work, what we need to do is work on more ways to keep people out of certain chat rooms. There's programs now for the Internet on the web browsers that you're showing where, if I want to set it up so that my child can't get in there and get on these things, I can do that. What we need to do is make people more and more aware of that rather than look at legislation. I mean, child porn is illegal already, let's work on enforcing the laws we've already got out there.
Okay. Okay.
We do not have child pornography laws. Our child pornography law was thrown out in the court because it wasn't written right. Representative McMahon tried to get it passed.
No, we do have child pornography laws.
But not where...
We don't have the Harmful to Minors Act, but there are laws against child pornography.
But we need stronger laws that can be enforced so people can be prosecuted for luring kids away with pornography, with pornographic materials. We need that law.
Ken, can I say something?
Go ahead, Chris, thank you.
Well, the representative had a law that she had tried to pass, which, a bill, I'm sorry, which David and I discussed on the show. We totally agree with that law, and I'm sorry to hear that it did not pass. But what I'm more concerned with are bills such as the Communications Decency Act of 1995, which they're trying to include in a greater communications bill that is on the floor right now, that says that anybody who solicits a, or has a lewd, lascivious, obscene, indecent comment, proposal, or suggestion over the Internet would be legally liable for a criminal act. That's what I have a problem with, more that they're trying to, the overregulation of the Internet. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have laws...
Speak up or forever hold your peace.
I generally have to agree that with what Chris is saying here, there are programs out like Surfbot, or, yeah, that's what it's called, that you can limit, you can control what you have access to.
And we'll, we'll be talking with those, about those later on in the show, but let me ask you this. Let's, let's face something. Kids spend, young people spend more time on the computer than the adults do. They are, they are much more computer literate, and, and isn't there a way for them to figure out and avoid or circuitously get into these things, whatever? I mean, I hear some people saying, yeah.
I think that would take an incredible amount of effort.
Go ahead.
But they have the effort, they have the talent.
Yeah, what he's been talking about is the ideal world where parents talk with their kids and where they are aware of what is on the Internet themselves, and they are able to warn their kids. But this is not an ideal world. There's parents that don't know what's on the Internet.
You know, I gotta tell you...
That's right.
Here, Lois, one of the things we're doing, here's what we're doing, and I want to go back to Rich Sherrill, because that's one of the reasons, one of the reasons we're doing this, having Rich surf this thing, is because of the very reason you just brought up. Down in San Francisco, where they have problems, or down in Oakland, the police invite parents into seminars in which they say, "You want to see what's on the Internet? You want to see what your children have access to?" And they sit down and they punch this up. They don't censor it the way we do. I mean, we've got to have the little blocky things on some of these pictures, and there's some pictures that no matter what we did to them, we couldn't put them on the air.
That's right.
You know? So, and how easy would you guess this is for a child to access, even if they didn't know the code?
My son is 12, he's probably quicker at this than I am. I've been doing this for about three months. I haven't set up my home computer for an Internet site. I think of myself as fairly open-minded, but I'm still a little bit scared at the possibilities, frankly.
All right, Chris, are you at all frightened about it?
As far as the material that's on the Internet? Yes. Like I said, it's a problem, it needs to be addressed.
Your, your concern is just what, what Lois represents in respect to how she wants to address it.
My concern is our laws that would affect the greater majority of people who are benefiting from the information that's on the Internet.
All right, so here's what we're talking, here's what we're talking about then. Here's, here's the crux of the issue. Are we looking at what lengths we go to to deal with this material, to keep it away from children? Are we talking about absolutely limiting freedom of speech? Who bears, the question is, who bears the ultimate responsibility in all this? The user or the medium? And that's what we'll talk about when we come back. Stay with us. We're talking about the Internet tonight here on Town Meeting. We're talking about particularly the sexual aspects of the Internet, and I want to keep going back to this, because I don't want to leave people with the impression that the Internet is, is riddled with, with, you know, sexual material. It is one band of what we're talking about, because the access, you can go, you can get into museums, you can get into libraries, you can get into universities and colleges and city government and federal government. The computer Internet is a wonderful tool. This one particular aspect of it, however, is very, very troubling, because the sexual content of the material here and the accessibility that kids have to it is becoming a very significant, serious issue.
A lot of parents are finding, trying to find ways that they can help their kids be on these things without them being able to get into these areas. There are a lot of local bulletin boards that you can get a lot of the same stuff from, especially the family field that you get from your friends. And yes, I was approached by a pedophile on one of these boards, and it was taken care of, and the guy is no longer on the board. He is no longer allowed on that bulletin board system because he posed a threat.
How do you know he's not coming on, under another name?
Because we voice validate all users, all adults have to have driver's licenses, and we keep records of the phone numbers that he's used, we keep records of addresses, all names and everything.
So you have a way, okay, I got you.
I'm her mother, and his mother, and, and I'm on a board with them, we're all here from Pacific Horizons, and we're a teen-oriented board as well as a lot of adults, and we're very careful to screen, you know, our people, make sure they're who they say they are. We do have adult areas that children under 18 are not allowed into, they have to give Terry a copy of their...
Now, you've obviously done all of this because you are concerned about what's on there.
Absolutely. I mean, you know, when they first started doing it, I thought, "Well, I got to check this out," and I got hooked on it too, and I love it. We do a lot of things with these people, they're family.
Go ahead.
Earlier this year, myself and my family were stalked by someone online, and I would really like to see the issue of protection for the user, because I couldn't even get a restraining order against this person. He was camping outside of my house for three days, and I couldn't do anything about it.
All right, explain to me, if you will, backtrack with us briefly here. This was someone that you began by talking to on the computer?
I didn't even talk to him. He knew my younger brother from school, I guess. I didn't even know the guy's name. I didn't know what he looked like.
And your, did your younger brother talk about you on the line?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I don't know how he even found out who I was. To this day, all I know about him is...
How did he find out where you live?
I don't know. I was told that somehow he managed to access my account on the board, and he managed to get all the information about me. I mean, he was telling me what I looked like, what classes I take in school, all sorts of personal information that not everyone even knows.
Is this an anomaly, Chris? Is this rather unusual, or does this happen with any degree of frequency?
No, and people, we had a show last week where we talked to hackers, and those are people who specialize in infiltrating corporation, government, other computers and attaining information. That'll happen to you whether you have a computer and you're on the Internet or not. A stalker, and someone who is trying to get your information can go to a credit bureau that has all your information, which, because we are now a technological...
You know, that doesn't make me feel very good.
It shouldn't, but that's a different issue than what we're talking about here.
This young lady feel very good. I mean, here we have a technology that lets acknowledge, does a lot of good, but she was stalked, she was terrorized by someone who used the computer to get to her.
He used the computer to get her information, true, but...
That's what I heard. He used the computer to... Well, okay.
I'm not saying that this board is a bad thing. I still call, I'm still there all the time. I'm even more involved now than I was before, but...
Are you more careful?
Oh, a lot more.
Okay.
I learned the hard way.
I'm still confused. Was she, was she found out through the computer or not?
It's somehow, and my ascertainment is, is that her younger brother may have provided information which led this guy to her.
Okay.
But see, there again, how old is your younger brother?
15 years old.
I mean, kids, teenagers can be manipulated by adults to give up information to...
That's right. See, that's the point exactly.
Because they, they feel... ...education to, to have these kids safeguarded from them being approached by people...
But this is, if you look at this...
This has nothing to do with computers.
Let me ask you, if you look at this as an electronic pen pal relationship, if I, if I'm 12 years old and I start writing to someone in Sweden, and over a period of years, I get to know this person, or months, I have a relationship with them in my mind, I think I know this person. I may not. And when you, when you look at the immediacy and the accessibility of the computer and amplify it, and you can see how children can be victimized and lured and, and gone after by predators.
And not only that...
I still think that's more blaming the technology than...
I'm not blaming the technology, I'm saying that there's people out there who use it in that fashion, that's not...
And not only that, but children have a natural curiosity about this kind of stuff. So...
My question is, if the parents are gonna, you know, the parents are obviously the ones who bought the computer, why are they going to let their kids get on the computer, not watch them, and have to have the Internet babysit them?
That is a very fair question, Lois.
Well, it's a good question, but it goes back to the ideal world that we don't have. In an ideal world, we would have every parent caring about their children. We would have every parent communicating with their children every year of their life, but that isn't happening. And not only that, but they might be able to control it at home, but what about when the kid goes next door to a neighbor's house?
I have a great, I have a great deal of difficulty putting too much pressure on the user, particularly the child, to make those kind of moral judgments. I, I'm a minister, I'm already setting my, my credentials out for you. I deal with a fairly large congregation. I know that the people we deal with, in the state of the family in our culture, we don't have the moral structure even in the family today to offer those kinds of constraints. One of my concerns in the last conversation is this, this whole issue, we've got a global broadcasting opportunity through the Internet. We're not having private conversations. I may have a conversation with someone in Sweden, but in that conversation, everybody else is brought in on it as well.
Not necessarily.
Well, there's at least an opportunity to create an access and...
But there's ways to go off by yourself, I think, because that was your sample. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, sure.
But let's take an issue.
I caught that.
Yeah. Even beyond the sexual realm. And six of the top 10 news groups are sexually oriented news groups. Providers have some responsibility here.
Let me ask this. We posed this question earlier, and let's address it now. Does the responsibility lie with the person who uses the computer? Or does the responsibility lie with those who provide what's on the computer?
The answer is the responsibility lies with both of those people.
I agree.
All right, we got it, okay, okay. The two of you agree. So now, if you were to craft a law, Lois, which part of that equation would you craft it towards? The user or the provider?
The provider. The person that puts the material on it.
Okay.
No, no, just a minute.
Now, Chris does not agree with you.
Not the person, okay, not the internet, but the person that puts the material on there has a responsibility. They have a responsibility to put it on in a way where children can access it.
I agree. Sorry, I agree. To an extent, and let me explain why I agree. I agree that the originator is responsible to a great degree. The originator, the creator. Okay, now, and as far as how he puts it on the internet and makes it easily accessible to minors, that's one thing. Okay?
And there are ways to make it so that they won't be easily accessible to minors.
So you're going after the provider, not the internet?
But she wants to create new laws.
No, not the internet. No, I'm going after the person that puts that material on the internet and doesn't protect it, and doesn't protect it.
Okay.
Well, now we're not talking about the originator. We're talking about a provider. There, I disagree. Provider should not be held responsible for what comes through the internet.
The Harmful to Minors Bill, the way it was written, said that anybody who carries the traffic would be liable. Everyone from US West to the 15 or 20 service providers that this guy is connected to would be liable for what he gets access to.
Are you talking about SC-14, the Communications Decency Act?
No, I'm talking about her bill, the Harmful to Minors Bill. It specifically said providing access, which means the provider would be the one responsible.
That is not true. It did not say that.
That was verbatim.
No, it's not verbatim.
Well, I'll tell you what. We'll see if we can kind of work this out amongst ourselves while we're on a break and straighten it out. And then when we come back, I want you to meet this guy here, because here's what he says. He says, "You know what? Kids are the problem. They're the worst abusers of the system." He runs a bulletin board service, and he says he's kicking the kids off. We'll talk to him when we come back. Stay with us. I know what that means now. Thanks for coming back here to Town Meeting. We are talking about sexual activity in cyberspace and the internet and your point.
Yeah, I'm one of the owners of the largest systems in the northwest, ProStar Plus. And we realize that there is definitely a problem out there, but we have parents that call us thanking us for our system. It's keeping the kids off the street, calling the mall, or whatever. But at the same time, we try to let these parents know that there is a lot of things out there that they have to be careful of. And you're talking about chat rooms. You could have a chat room on gardening and still have a predator in there. And the parents have to realize not to use it for babysittering and keep an eye on their children. I'm as worried of my kids meeting a drug dealer on their way to school. And just that the fact of the matter is, is this meeting is just another, it's another problem that we've got and another way for parents to read our kids. But the parents have to realize they've got to keep them.
Okay.
But the problem is...
I want to come back. Did I... Here, stand up here with me. You run a board... Yeah, you can hold on to me. What are you, going to tip over? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Jeez, I get bad. I'm sorry. I wasn't watching. So you run a board as well?
Yes.
All right, and your attitude about kids is what?
Well, they are a pain, no doubt, but they're going to get into it irregardless, no matter what I do. Right now, I have to validate driver's license, copy, signature, the best I can do. With the kids, apparently what I'm going to have to do is I'm going to have to make them submit a form to their parents to release me of any liability.
Is it your intention to try to keep the kids off? I mean, do they...
I can't watch them. After they connect to the PPP server, which is the point-to-point server, the way they do their Netscape, whatnot, after they get to that, I can't see what they're doing. I can't tell where they're going.
Then are they abusing it?
I would assume so.
In what fashion?
Uh, well, it's being abused, no doubt. There are sites out there... Let me ask you a question. Netcom, one of the biggest providers in the west, anyway. We have pornography laws in this country. Why are they allowed to carry alt dot rec... Let's see, alt dot binaries dot pictures dot erotica dot children? That's a news group. That they circulate pictures of children, erotic children. Erotic teens, erotic bestiality. Why are they allowed to carry it?
We need to...
That...
True, true, they're very... These pictures are not...
Yeah, we need to...
Rich, can you pull that up? Are they on there?
That will regulate it.
Okay.
We need to have laws that will address that specific issue.
But Lois, wait a minute.
And that's my whole point.
The question is, aren't there already laws that prohibit, right?
Well, then we need to enforce them.
Child pornography is illegal.
That's right, it is. That's right. Child pornography is legal, but right now, in some places, it's still not illegal to give children pornography. And that's what we're talking about as far as the state of Washington is concerned. The laws that we have have been unenforceable, have been ruled unconstitutional, and we need some constitutional laws here in the state. And that's why we had the bill that I introduced in the House, and Senator Smith introduced in the Senate.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, a local user on the computer bulletin board that Greg runs, and I noticed that most of the screenshots at the beginning of this program were from that board. I recognized every single user. They're all decent people, and I find that the picture painted here is a little bit one-sided.
Fair enough, go ahead. What is one-sided about it? What is one-sided?
What's one-sided is this is being presented as essentially a complete purveyor of smut. The internet, computers, and services in general.
That's not what I said. And I've gone to great lengths to explain that it is not, that it's a small slice, but it is a slice that draws our concern and anger.
I see that. What needs to be done about that concern is for the parents to educate themselves about what their children are going to do.
All right, fair enough. Chris, let me ask you something. If there is this level, why don't... Why doesn't the internet, why don't the providers police themselves a little bit more?
They do to an extent.
Well, how did the kiddie porn pictures get on there?
Kiddie porn pictures, if they... It depends where they originate from. If it's coming through Netcom, is that what you're saying?
Although I can't... You need a mic, so it doesn't do any good to engage in it.
Oh, I see, okay.
See, it's this thing. You may be computer literate.
I'm TV literate.
Go ahead.
I think that it's very important that we keep separate in our minds the difference between a one-to-one communication or a mailing of a picture or an image or documents from one person to another, which I don't believe there's anything that can be done about that other than personal responsibility. What we need to deal with is downloadable image groups or files that are accessible to people under 18 years of age. Those are the big problem. That's where most of the images are.
Part of what it seems we're talking about here, Lois, is that even those who recognize that you have legitimate concerns and appreciate the efforts that you're looking at, have a concern that there's going to be a violation of their First Amendment rights as well.
Oh, well, that's a silly argument.
You know...
Hold it, hold it.
Lois, I don't know if it's fair to categorize concern over an abridgement of the First Amendment guarantee of freedom of speech and silly...
No, what I mean by that, hold it. What I mean by that is that argument is not a valid argument. It's been valid about quite a bit. But basically, we're not talking about First Amendment rights, because, for instance, we are not... We're not saying you can't not... You're going to deny access to adults. We're not even saying that they can't produce the stuff. What we're saying is we don't want the kids to be able to access it.
Ready access, okay.
And First Amendment rights, as they relate to minors, are always limited, because we're talking about parental rights issue.
Go ahead.
Okay, I have kids that are online, and so what I did was I got on ProStar and Masterpiece, and...
With your services?
Yes, and I checked it out. And yes, that smut's on there. So my kids, when they're on the computer, I'm there with them. I think the government's part is to focus more on the law that made it legal for this boy to up and leave home. I think that's where the real concern should be.
Well, we are concerned about that. We are concerned about the law that made it legal for him to leave home. And we've done something about that. If you have been paying attention, this legislature in 1995 did something about that. But we also need to do something about the people that are not responsible and are, want to prey on young people.
Let me take a break, and when we come back, I want to revisit Rich. I want to see what else he's been able to pull up on the internet and see what else is on there. And we'll also talk about some ways to block. There are software programs out there that can block access to this material that we've been talking about. Let's see how effective it is and how much it costs. Stay with us, we'll be right back. All right, thanks for staying with us. Go ahead.
I'm speaking as a parent of two young girls. I have a 10-year-old and a 7-year-old. I've been on the internet since 1988. I'm well aware of all the material that they're talking about and the concerns that they have. I consider it my absolute, my 100% responsibility to teach...
Go ahead.
To teach my children, to guide them, to let all this knowledge that they can possibly learn about be available to them, and to fight with every fiber of my being anyone who tries to tell me what I can let them see. It's my choice, they're my children, it's their life.
I feel that the responsibility lies on the shoulders of the parents, and if we want to do something good for our children, let's teach them what's right and what's wrong, because right now, when they're younger, we can put them in a closet, lock all this stuff away, but when they're a little bit older, they have to make these choices and decisions for themselves. And they are the children that we are, who will be posting these things, who will be deciding.
Rich, there's stuff you pulled up on there we can't show, correct?
That's true.
I mean, we'd get in big trouble.
That's part of my limit here tonight, is I have to be careful what I do bring up, because I don't always know what's coming up before it comes up.
Is it... How much knowledge would I... And I asked this earlier. Could I sit down and in a short period of time, or could a young person sit down in a short period of time, access that stuff?
Absolutely, and I'm the best-case example of that, because I've only, unlike most of these people, I've only been doing this for about three months and intensively only for the last couple of weeks.
Okay, real quickly.
If you don't want your children to have access to this information on the internet, then don't get an internet account.
What... Chris, could you explain the programs that are available?
Sure, I was going to say that gentleman you just spoke to had a very familiar voice. What's your name, sir?
I'm David Monroe. I'm Chris's co-host.
Oh, he's a co-host on KBI. Ah. Shram got set up on that one. Explain to me what these software programs are and what conceivably do they do.
These are software programs that we have talked about, that I have not... I'm going to admit that I have not used yet. But what man can develop as far as a predator or what we... What the internet brings to us as far as negatives, we can use the same technology to block out these things, and that's what they have done.
Theoretically, how do they work? You load this into the computer?
You load this in... Now, these are retail packages. You purchase these.
Right, I got you.
You load them into the computer, and you're able to lock your children out of certain areas, stop them from receiving certain types of data, transmission, information, such as pornographic photographs and that sort of thing.
So you can get on the internet, but limit access to areas of the internet with this computer?
Yes, yes. So your child can go to the Smithsonian, or he can go to some other very informative site without stopping by Playboy or Penthouse?
Lois, does that... Does that kind of begin to address your concerns as to the access availability?
Well, that's really great when you have parents that know what's happening. That's really great. That's the ideal world that we're talking about. But a lot of parents don't know it.
The point is, we've got a lot of parents out there go out by a $1,500 pentium, plunking in front of their 15-year-olds, and say, "I don't know the first thing about this, but you do? Go ahead." You've got to have, you've got to have the parents knowing what they're doing and taking care of these kids. Otherwise, it is their fault that the kids are getting this. It is not the provider, it is not the internet, it is the parents.
I just wanted to make one statement, and that's that these particular laws we're talking about are very universal laws. Now, I'm sorry to say, or maybe I'm happy to say, that what I consider indecent for my child is not what that person over there is going to consider indecent, but those laws are not going to take that into account.
Okay, I would like to say something about the parental rights issue. My bill and the gentleman over here that said he would defend to his death, or whatever he said, the right to decide what his children saw, I agree with that. If he wants to show his kids that stuff, I have not said that he shouldn't have the right to show them that. What I'm saying is, he has a right also to expect that society will protect his kids when they're out in public.
All right, here's what we'll do.
When they're at another person's place.
Here's what we'll do. When we come back, let's address some of the specific areas just from Lois and Chris here as to what we should look for, agree with, fight against, or provide in terms of dealing with this issue that we've been wrestling with for the past hour. Stay with us, we'll be right back. All right, thanks for staying with us. Lois, with the time remaining, the best point you want to leave us with?
Okay, in the past, in our history, the government has legitimately denied certain kinds of material on radio, television. They've denied access for minors to certain kinds of bookstores and live performances. This is no different. We have an obligation to make sure that children are protected on the internet. And I think the best way that they can do that, the best way that they can do that is to make it a criminal offense to put that stuff on there without protecting it with some kind of a password or something that people... Only people who show that they are adults can access it.
Chris? The internet is in its infancy, and it is something that we are prospering from and benefiting from greatly as far as the quickness with which we can transfer and attain knowledge and information. What we have... Responsibility lies with the end user and the people who provide access. This, by the way, is what they're doing as far as the providers. It's up to the parents to instill a set of values and understanding into the children, and I think that's the way to do it.
Join me in thanking our two guests for having contributed here. Very much appreciated. I think the advisory here, one way or the other, be aware of what's being done legally, be aware of what's available technologically, figure out what you like and which decisions you want to make, all right, on the issue. Coming up next week on Town Meeting, a look at what some say are the miracles of alternative medicine. There are people who say they have been beaten back everything from, beaten back everything from cancer to the common cold to a lifestyle that consists of natural herbs, vitamins, and diet. You'll meet a woman who says she... Doctors told her she only had a little bit of time left to live. That was several years ago. Whether it is homeopathic or naturopathic approach, the focus is the cause of what makes you ill and not the illness. Join us for an insightful look at this whole issue. Be sure to join me on Como AM 1,000 from 9 to noon, Monday through Friday. We'll be talking about some good stuff there. I ask that you make Town Meeting a regular part of your Sundays. Thanks very much for watching tonight, folks. Take care, please have a good evening.
ABC News and Como News 4, recognized as the leader in television news.